My name is Bob Liff and this is the CUNY Forum, a monthly town meeting that brings prominent New Yorkers together with faculty and students of the Edwiti Riegowski Internship Program in Government and Public Affairs. Election Day 2021 yielded a city council like no other in our history as women for the first time comprise a majority with thirty-one of the body's fifty-one members. Because of term limits, thirty-five council members will be newcomers to the body, which will include its first Muslim woman, first Korean-American woman, first Indian-American, and five, count them, five Republicans. With a new era and a new governor, they'll be confronting the usual problems and challenges that New York City faces along with the special circumstances growing out of the pandemic that continues to evolve and undercut efforts to get back to whatever passes for normal in this chaotic city that we love. And if they are newcomers to elective office, they're not newcomers to civic and political activism, including the three council members from three boroughs who joined us today to give us a sense of who they are, how they got to where they are, and what they're looking forward to as they embark on their terms of office. Camilla Hanks is replacing term-limited Debbie Rhodes representing Staten Island's North Shore, becoming the only Democrat, I believe, elected from the borough. And she was an artist and activist and a CUNY graduate, having earned a finance and marketing degree from the College of Staten Island. I'm a Brooklyn College graduate, so I relate to that. Before embarking on a career in the public and private sectors, they won numerous awards for her activism and accomplishments. Lincoln Ressler is a veteran of Brooklyn political activism, having founded New Kings Democrats to challenge the Democratic Party leadership and recently spent a stint working within the administration of outgoing Mayor Bill de Blasio before winning election in Brooklyn's Thirty-third District. He will be replacing term-limited Steve Levin in one of the city's most complicated districts, which includes stretches of the Brooklyn waterfront from Greenpoint to Brooklyn Heights, as well as the Hasidic communities of Williamsburg and the nightlife capital on the north side of Williamsburg. Shawna Bray is replacing the newly-elected Manhattan Borough President Mark Reed, representing the Seventh District, based in Washington Heights and stretching down through West Harlem and Morningside Heights. A lawyer who worked closely with Congressman Adriano Espaillat, he became a tenants' rights attorney with the New York Legal Assistance Group, which is both a professional and a personal interest, since his family was evicted from their apartments when he was a boy. Shawna, among other things, you're going to be my council member. So let me start with you. In your campaign, which obviously I followed because I'm a political junkie, you talked a lot about this experience of having been evicted as a kid, and that kind of drove you in part to become a tenants' rights attorney. How does your personal upbringing follow you into this kind of a job?
Well, Bob, thank you so much for your question. I'm very grateful to be representing you in this big council. My personal experiences fuel my commitment for public service and fighting for tenants everywhere. I came home from school one day to find my mother holding an eviction notice at a kitchen table and, you know, just remembering the pain and what our family went through, taking shelter with neighbors. It's something that was very vivid for me. And so I went to law school and I became a tenant lawyer, and I keep families in their homes for a living. I also was a struggling public school student. I was held back in the fourth grade and graduated from schools like Columbia University because of investments in after-school program for our kids. And I know that a lot of people in District Seven are still very much struggling in the same ways my family did. And so I know how to address those concerns because I've lived through them. And I'm counting on my colleagues like Lincoln, Camilla, and everyone else to, you know, get things done in the next city council.
Camilla, the North Shore is on the verge of major development, even with the concerns about climate change and waterfront neighborhoods. And at the same time, you know, development always raises concerns about gentrification, about equity echoes in neighborhoods all around the city. We've seen those debates constantly coming before the city council. What's going on? How do you find that balance?
So, you know, Staten Island is probably like the final frontier of development, and it is so-called the forgotten borough. And I think that, you know, my career in politics and community activism started with actual development and what that looks like. So, you know, a lot of what I brought to the table was a comprehensive view of, you know, what does Staten Island want? So I'm really big on communities allowing to define itself and not allowing development and city government to say, well, this is what we are. And so when you think of Staten Island, a lot of things come to mind, you know, we're kind of like this, you know, different, you know, the Fourth Borough, the Forgotten Borough, it's a red barrel. And in fact, that most people really don't understand what in fact Staten Island is. And so development also thinks that way, that they can come in and they can define who we are. So Staten Island is, you know, big on historic preservation, and it's very, and it needs to dilute the existing conditions by building density. But how do we do that and how do we do that smartly? So when people talk about, you know, responsible development, that's the onus on the development. We're talking about sensible development, which, what makes sense for the community. And so I ran on making sure that we have a master plan that really takes into account the importance of being sensible to the people. Most of the development are going to happen in areas of color, in areas that are just, that are low income. And you're talking about billions of dollars coming in without really understanding who or how that is going to benefit the existing community that's there. So that's a much greater and longer conversation, but we definitely, my campaign was really about digging into that because I worked in economic development, I'm a Coral Fellow. I've, you know, understood what economic development is and how that looks like gentrification, how to marry the old and the new, how to make sure that communities that exist are communities that are considered. And we just don't want to just enter and just say, you know, because we're here, it's better. No, you have to take into account the communities that have been there for centuries. You know, our waterfront has been defunct for a hundred and fifty years. So you just don't, you know, we're not discovering Staten Island, you know. So being in the council, I'm completely blessed, I'm very excited to be there. But it is to be the voice of the people that had no voice, that have been the stewards of this community for centuries, and their voice needs to be heard, and how to incorporate new development in that voice.
Keeping with the development thing, we just had two major developments, I mean, really major developments go through the city council. One was the Gowanus redevelopment, in which the outgoing council member Brad Lander, the comptroller-elect, worked with the community and put together a plan for housing and, you know, it's a Gowanus Creek is a kind of a notoriously polluted, you know, waterway that's being cleaned up. And then we had the New York Blood Center, where the local councilman, Councilman Kalos, opposed the development, but it was viewed as a much stronger part of developing the city's health science infrastructure, which is a big piece of the future. And member deference was set aside in the case of the Blood Center. It didn't have to be set aside in the case of Gowanus redevelopment because you had the local council members supporting. If you were in the council, I'm going to throw, you know, I'd like each of you to answer this. Would you have voted for the Blood Center redevelopment? Is member deference just a path for nothing to happen? I mean, this is a major change in how the city council operates. Lincoln, why don't I start with you?
Let me firstly thank you for having me. It's great to be with you, Bob, and CUNY is one of the great treasures of our city. And it's wonderful to be with young people in the CUNY community and with future colleagues. So I'm so excited to serve with Shawna and Camilla. The Blood Center was an essential development, and I am very pleased that the council members had the courage to support it. It's worth noting that the rezoning encompassed two council districts. A portion of the rezoning was in Councilmember Powers District and a portion of it was in Councilmember Kalos's district. While Councilmember Kalos opposed it, I think that the wisdom of the council came forward and overwhelmingly approved it because this was a project that supported an essential nonprofit organization, expanded life science jobs, and was a sensible development, even an essential development for the growth of our city. Look, member deference is a reality that we have to navigate because there are so many hundreds of ULR projects that come through the council every year. I can't know in detail the ins and outs of every single project in every single district. So we need to look to the local members for their guidance and expertise about what makes sense in their communities. But there are going to be projects that rise above, that have larger consequence than just the square block in which development is being proposed. And the Blood Center is a great example of that, and it was a project I would have been very happy to support, no matter how the local council members approached it.
The question, Shawna, is if you had a major development in your district that you were opposed, whether it's Mayor Adams or it's, you know, some other, the Borough President, or what other forces saw as a development of citywide interest, would you accept the fact that your member deference would be set aside to support that? I mean, this is hypothetical, you know, I'm not, you know, I mean, I guess the biggest development in the district within recent years was the West Harlem-Columbia campus, which was very controversial. Would you, I mean, would you want to be deferred to, or would you accept that there were developments that have a citywide interest?
You know, Bob, I would say first, I would support the Blood Center. I think that, like Lincoln said, navigating member deference is very complicated, right? And so I think that we should value member deference and a local member's perceptions of what of what a project and its implications are, because they are the voices of our neighborhoods. However, we can't support member deference to the point where it produces an absurd result. And in this case, it was clear that this project was create life science jobs, it was going to save lives, and it was something that was just very essential for our city. And in those moments, you gotta be able to step up and support projects like that, especially when you think about the totality of the city. I think that that's where, I don't think member deference is done. I think that where members, however, take absurd positions, that's where the city and other colleagues need to step in and really stand up for the public good of New York.
You have, you know, and this is, I think this is going to come to bear in your district, Camilla Hanks, because of the development that's being proposed along the North Shore. There were countervailing forces in play, you know, especially in Ireland where you have, you know, a kind of a more pro-development governing structure, or, you know, a largely Republican governing structure, that may not care as much about you. So I mean, I guess we're... Okay, I'm sorry.
So on the campaign trail, I've supported adding density to my district, right? And it's all about how you have that conversation in the context of the community's needs. Morningside Heights Community Coalition, they put forward supporting upzoning as long as it is contextual. There are folks that are willing to go up to thirteen, fourteen stories. And if that's what the neighborhood is okay with, and we're creating affordable housing to address the housing stock needs citywide, then I'm going to support it, but I'm going to do it first and foremost with our community. And I did run a campaign where I was supporting member deference, supporting against member deference if necessary. And I also support upzoning in my district as long as contextual and as long as my community approves it.
Camilla, I guess the difference is between member deference and a member veto. That, you know, I mean, I think what Lincoln and what Shawna are saying is that they like the idea of member deference, but that member veto, at least in the case of the Blood Center, went too far. I think you're going to face a lot of these decisions because of the proposals for development in Staten Island.
So, and I also really, you know, I didn't get a chance to do that when I first answered the first question, but I really do thank, you know, CUNY for this opportunity to speak. And, you know, as a CUNY person, you know, my colleagues are teaching me, like, you know, you have to say thank you. I do want to thank everyone for allowing this opportunity. So what's really interesting, as you mentioned, like, you know, the Republican borough, and again, we're going to go back to, you know, borough branding. And so the Republicans and the, a lot of Democrats and the community was against River North, completely against this, you know, upzoning.
What is the River North development?
The River North development was proposed at twenty-six stories in a hillside preservation district. And so, you know, being that we are, like I said, the final frontier of development, so how do you mitigate that? How do you plan that properly? And so the current council member said, yes, we want this, we want to build density, we want to have affordable housing. The community didn't want it, the community board didn't want it, the Borough President, who was a Republican, didn't want it, and all of the elected officials, Republican or Democrat, said no. But, you know, the current council member said, yes, let's do this. And it's one of the first things that I have to handle as a incoming council member. And so when we look at development, we need to look at what is it doing for the community? What benefits does it have for the community? Not how does it benefit and prosper the developer, but what are the community benefits? What are the labor implications? Is it going to be built using labor? Is it going to benefit the community in the long term? So Staten Island is four hundred and fifty thousand folks. We don't take up more than six percent of the New York City tax base. So building density is a really big deal, more pocketbooks, more voices, more voters, and then we can be like the big guys, you know, Brooklyn and Manhattan. So, you know, all of these things are taken consideration. However, I do believe that, you know, there is, this is one of those instances where deference kind of didn't really work and the people didn't get their voices heard. So, but I am a proponent of people listening to the council member. So there's a, it is a complicated issue, every issue, and I support, you know, the Blood Center, I support these projects, but I am looking to the council person in those districts to really make sure that I understand. So Staten Island is always going to be a little bit different. And there was not the kind of support for this project that is, and not because of the height, but actually, how is it going to benefit and is it in the appropriate place? And does it, you know, add to the contextual environment in which the North Shore is, which is, you know, it's on a historic preservation. So it is one of those things that are complicated, and these are the things that we have to face in the incoming, in the first one hundred days, is to talk to them and figure out like, what, how we're going to do this.
Lincoln, one of the things that is kind of comparable between the North Shore of Staten Island, the South Shore of Brooklyn, parts of Soundview and Hunts Point in the Bronx, and the waterfront in your community is, you know, we've seen Superstorm Sandy, we've seen Hurricane Ida, we've seen the, you know, the impact of climate change with storm surges covering the water. You know, you don't have a lot of, you know, a lot of height between the water and a lot of the land, which is prime development land, you know, along Kent Avenue, along, you know, you know, all the way, all the way through, all through Greenpoint, all through Williamsburg. How do you balance that?
No, it's a great question, and, you know, the Thirty-third Council District, as you mentioned, Greenpoint and Williamsburg, downtown Brooklyn, we've seen more new development in our district than any other. There's been more housing starts in our council district than any other council district in the city over the last decade, and it's not even close. We've grown in population significantly more than any other council district over the, you know, the last ten years. And much of this development has failed to meet the needs of our community. We haven't, you know, we, the downtown Brooklyn and Greenpoint-Williamsburg areas underwent two massive rezonings about fifteen years ago. Close to ninety percent of the housing that's been created is market-rate luxury housing, overwhelmingly studios and one-bedrooms that fails to house families and fails to meet the needs of working families. The parks, the schools, the infrastructure investments that we were promised have still not been realized. So folks in our community are rightly skeptical about development because promises have been consistently broken. We need to strike a better deal with developers because development, I think as both Shawna and Camilla were saying, can be helpful if it's effectively meeting the needs of our community, if it's investing in resiliency, it can actually help shore up our waterfront communities in meaningful ways. And so the specifics of the deal matter, the specifics of the proposal matter. I'm open to new development and I'm open to our district. We have phenomenal mass transit across our district. I'm open to our district continuing to be a place where there's real density as long as we're getting the affordable housing we need and the investments that we need to meet for the infrastructure of a growing community. You know, I'm happy to follow the guidance of my fellow colleagues as long as they're generally aligned from a value standpoint. If a council member on the South Shore or in Northeast Queens is fighting against a development project because they don't want affordable housing in our community, in their community, that's not okay with me. We need affordable housing everywhere. Folks are struggling to get by in New York City, even in the Thirty-third Council District, which is one of the wealthier districts in the city, a quarter of tenants pay a majority of their income in rent, right? It's not sustainable, it's not okay. And so we need to be ensuring that affordable housing is going up in each and every neighborhood, and I'm happy for the Thirty-third to do its part, and I hope that each of my colleagues will do the same.
Let me get to the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, the political nightmare you're all going to be facing, which of course is the election of a speaker. You know, you've just been through elections where thousands and thousands of voters were in play. You're now in an election where you just need to get twenty-six out of fifty-one votes to become the council member. And I know you were all being lobbied by the six, at my last count, six council speakers. City and state just moved something, seven, I mean, city and state moved something that the council speaker candidates have agreed to limit their, you know, limit the number of forums, fora, that they're attending. But let me ask you this question in this context. Traditionally, this has been a decision, it's been borough-based, and at times, it's been ethnically based, which is particularly relevant now because we have no, you know, we have no Latino leadership in prominent roles anywhere in the city. Personally, we have, you know, we're going to have a mayor, a public advocate, and a comptroller, who are all from Brooklyn. We have the United States...
It's a great thing.
...leader. We probably have the next Speaker of the House, hopefully, and, you know, in Brooklyn. I don't think that's enough either, because I'm a, because I'm a...
And the next governor as well.
I'm not getting into the governors, right? But, you know, let me start with you, Shawna. I mean, there's, you know, this is a race where you just need to get to twenty-six votes, you know. Is it the individual? Is it an ethnic identity? Is it an ideological identity? What are the factors that go into it? And at some point, you just got to line up with colleagues on something. I mean, there's a lot of countervailing forces in this, and you get elected to go first.
Yeah, well, look, I want us to vote for a speaker who is going to prioritize recovery from the pandemic, makes life better in real immediate ways, someone who won't be vindictive, right? Someone who's going to be very fair when it comes to the procedures of the council, making sure that bills are distributed in a way that are equitable, that the budgets are being done in a way that reflects community needs. Like, my community is very under-resourced compared to other neighborhoods. And so those are the things that I'm looking for, and I think that we have a lot of speaker candidates who fit the bill. But the really, the big issue here, right, is everybody, this is like the longest staring contest we've seen for ages, and Lincoln agrees, and Camilla agrees. At the end of the day, the biggest problem is we have a collective action problem, right? So the less groups that are formed, how are you going to convince colleagues to come together and make a deal? So I'm hoping that there's going to be more groups forming soon, and that there's one person representing an entire group, and that it's decided quickly, because it's very hard to address a collective action problem when individual members are not combined, or at least forming as part of coalitions.
I mean, let me just focus in a little bit, though, because there has been such a focus on, A, electing a woman speaker, now especially now that the council is majority women. I'm going to ask the, I'm going to ask the rest of you the same questions. And there's significant discussion of the need to elect a citywide Latino leader. I mean, how are those factors playing in? I mean, you know, you have a Latino in your adjoining district, I guess, I guess two districts over in terms of Diana Ayala is in the race, you've got Matos out in Queens, you know, you've got Carolina Rivera from, you know, the Lower East Side. How important is that?
Diversity is very important, Bob, right? You know, folks want to see folks like themselves represented in leadership, and I think that that's very important. You know, the question is how that, you know, the need for diversity translates into votes, into votes, right? And, you know, we can only do so much, but are other, you know, other colleagues going to be able to do the same and bring support? So, you know, I love, you know, I love a lot of the candidates for Speaker. I love Ayala, I love Carolina, I love Justin, I love Keith, right? I love a lot of the other candidates, you know, this is, I'm one vote. And again, it becomes, it's an issue that needs to be addressed, and it will only be addressed, you know, through coalitions that form in support of that. But if coalitions don't form in support of that, then it just won't happen.
Well, let me ask you also, because of the idea, because of the representation issue, if you will, you know, the female issue, the Latino issue, you know, whether or not these are, you know, in the past, there had been borough, you know, Bronx, you know, the Bronx delegation stood firm with the Manhattan delegation, that kind of a thing. How, what kind of factors are you looking at? And I assume you've all been lobbied endlessly about this.
Yeah, yeah, we have. I think that this is a very interesting experience for me coming in. I've, the last twenty years, I've been through a lot of this, like, looking from the outside, looking in, and now being in it. Listen, because we're the last borough, the forgotten borough, I am keenly aware of all of the factors that would go into that. But I am ultimately, and I'm hoping my colleagues agree with me, concerned, and what I find to be important is the person that can bring the body together, so we can then bring about the funding and the resources to the city of New York. It is really important to understand the job and the role of the speaker, and the role of the speaker is to be the voice of the body. And that means, you know, I have not yet met the entire body, I've met them piecemeal, and I think it's super important for me to meet them and to understand. They're not people who have been endorsed by someone, they're not people. They're real people who were voted on by the people that elected them. And, you know, the speaker is the one that needs to bring the body together so we can effectually run New York City. And we are really paying attention to the votes, and as Shawna has said, I've met everyone, they're incredible, they're incredible people. I mean, I couldn't find, you know, a better group of people, and they all deserve to be there. Now, who emerges and who is the one that is going to actually do the job of the speaker, which is to bring the body together so we can work or be a check on the mayor and advocate for the things that we need for our district? And so when all of that emerges, I am sure that I'll pick the right person.
Lincoln, you're up. I think Tom Q, going back, you know, a hundred and sixty years, said, I remember Tom Q, so I guess I'm the guy, you know, I guess I'm that old. But, you know, in the past, boroughs stood together, you know, borough delegations. That doesn't seem to be the case now. What are you looking at? What factors? I mean, representation, ideology, what are you looking at?
Well, I very much echo what my colleagues have expressed. I think that representation absolutely matters. It is an exciting and historic council that will, for the first time, be majority female. And, you know, the Latino community in New York, you know, continues to grow significantly, nearly thirty percent of the population, over forty percent of the kids in our public schools are Latina. And so, you know, the lack of Latino representation citywide in elected office, statewide in elected office, this is a glaring hole that needs to be addressed. And, you know, I'm encouraged by multiple Latino candidates in the race, multiple strong women in the race. We have an embarrassment of riches in the candidates to choose from here for Speaker. I agree with, you know, as Shawna was saying at the jump, you know, the formations of blocks of votes are working differently than in the past. And, you know, when I was starting to get involved in politics, you had a Brooklyn County boss who ran the borough with an iron fist and controlled the votes in the borough. who ran the the borough with an iron fist and controlled the votes in the borough largely. That is not the case anymore. And most incoming council members in Brooklyn, like myself, are reform-oriented and progressive. And we are organizing ourselves along ideological lines, along, based on shared values and working with other members around the city to advance those values and hope to help elect a speaker who's going to be a champion of of the progressive values that we believe in and going to be, as needed, a partner and a check on the mayor. So that we can be, you know, a strong independently elected, so that we can be a strong independent arm of our government.
I'll be shocked if any of you answer this. Do any of you have a specific candidate that you're willing to say I support, Sean? At this point?
Not at this, not at this point.
Smart man. Lincoln?
The field is narrowing, but I don't have a single candidate.
Camilla?
I echo Lincoln. The field is narrowing, but I don't have a candidate.
Question for a brief answer, because we're gonna go for, because we're we're gonna, we're gonna go to take a couple of questions from students. And I also wanna get your thoughts on what you, what you, what you expect from 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 a Mayor Adams administration. What committees are you interested in? And try to keep this brief. What committees are you interested in and why? Camilla, let me start with you.
So I ran on public safety. I ran on sanitation and I ran on, I ran on very specific bread and butter issues. And but I definitely love the not-for-profit world. I'm really big on economic development and youth and community services.
Well, we talked about how the thirty-third is a waterfront district. So climate issues are are very much at the forefront for for my community. Environmental protection is a critically important committee and one that I'd I'd really be honored to serve on. Another one that's of import to me is is oversight and investigation. I've had the privilege of spending about a decade working in city government and know where some of our agencies might be able to do a better job, might benefit from a healthy dose of oversight and would love to have the opportunity to serve there and and help make a difference.
I have expressed interest among my colleagues on consumer affairs and worker protection. I think it's important to think about the the licensing aspect and how that impacts a lot of our vulnerable small businesses and how we help them stay afloat and stay in our neighborhoods, especially. I'm also very passionate for obvious reasons. Housing and buildings like to be a member of that committee for fighting for tenants. And, yeah, among other things, there's a lot. I would probably like to be a member as well, and not necessarily a chair, but a member of environmental committee. There's a lot of resiliency issues we need to face in District Seven. We've seen waters cascading on one forty-fifth Street every time it rains over a certain amount. And, yeah, there's just so much to do. We need to improve our sewage capacity to make sure that, you know, that our our subways, but also our streets are not flooding. So there's a wide array of issues and I I I would be grateful to to serve in any of these capacities.
Let me go to Ernesto Mave Jr. and see and take our first question from one of the students. Ernesto, how are you?
Fine. Our first question today comes from Davidza Heredia, who is a graduate student in John Jay College of Criminal Justice. She is a CUNY Women's Public Service Intern at the Office of Assembly Member U L I New. The New York City Council continues to promote moving the city in a progressive direction. What strategies will new members use to promote progressive policies to conservative-leaning constituents?
Let me, let me start with you, Lincoln, on that one.
First and foremost, what matters, I think, to people across each of our districts is that we deliver effective government services. And as Fiorella LaGuardia said a long time ago, there isn't a Democratic or Republican way to pick up the garbage. And we are affect, we are effective champions for our district and ensuring that the Department of Sanitation and our Department of Education and Department of Transportation are doing their jobs and addressing basic pothole needs in our communities. Then I think it frees up, it frees us up to take some bolder positions and take some risks. And it also builds goodwill with our 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 neighbors, our constituents, that they have faith and confidence in us to do what's right for their community. And, you know, I I ran on a unabashedly progressive platform and and those are my deeply held beliefs. And, you know, my approach is always to show up and have the conversation and answer the tough questions and explain where I'm coming from on different issues. You know, I think that there's been a lot of, you're a graduate student at John, John Jay, so I'm sure you're thinking a lot about criminal justice and policing. You know, there've been a lot of questions about defund. I think that, you know, when when I end up in the more conservative corners of my district and have conversations about how police officers I know didn't sign up for the force because they wanted to be dealing with homeless services, that they wanted to be doing mental health calls all day, that they wanted to be engaging people about noise complaints. We should be investing in alternatives where we're connecting New Yorkers to the services and support and mediation that they need to actually address their problems and address their solutions and allow police officers to focus their time on solving crime, solving violent crimes especially, and preventing those crimes from happening. So, you know, when when we get into those conversations, even folks who may be resistant to to thinking about a changing role for the Police Department can, I think, are more open and understanding than than you might give them credit. So it's, you know, at the end of the day, it's about showing up. It's about having the hard conversations. It's about explaining where we're coming from. And, you know, I think that people are a lot more open-minded than than we sometimes give them credit.
Anybody else wanna jump in on that? I mean, it's a.
I'll jump in on that one. Because I come from, you know, Staten Island, and I am an unabashedly moderate centrist. And I could not have said anything better than what Lincoln said. You know, at the end of the day, right, you know, you want a city that works and and to understand the job of the council. And then when that is done and the understanding, the job of government, you put your trash out, you want somebody to pick it up. You wanna be, everyone's calling me, I apologize. You you walk out of your house, everybody wants to be safe. Everybody wants to walk outside their house and not get run over by a car that's speeding down the street. Everybody wants the the access to education. They want the access to a beautiful neighborhood. Everybody wants that. And so when you start from that perspective, all of the labels seem to melt away, especially, and my colleagues can tell you this, you knock on a door in public housing, you knock on a door in a really nice neighborhood, I guarantee you, the issues are the same. And when you're in college, you know, and we have a lot of these ideas of, you know, go fight, win. I was a graduate of LaGuardia High School and I sat on the, you know, the bench and I'm like, you know, anarchy and, you know, peace and and I wanted, and then I bought a home and then I had children and then, you know, and then your your ideology changes into practicality, which changes into pragmatism. And I think it is the job and and I think, you know, I'm only saying this to say that Lincoln said it so perfectly that, you know, we all want the same things. And when we start to label things, it's, it becomes, you know, the things that, you know, the that kind of gets in it, changes the translation. And so the first step is for CUNY folks like you to be on these kinds of calls, to listen, to be engaged, come to City Hall, listen to how bills are done, listen to, go to your community board meetings, go to your civic associations and see the the process. And I guarantee you, you'll understand that you'll start to see the world in a very normal way.
Sean, that's really nicely stated, the evolution from, you know, ideology, for want of a better term, to pragmatism. I mean, what do you think? I mean, you know.
I'm ideologically between Lincoln and Camilla.
We'll get you there.
You know, so let me tell you, you know, I think what's important in our in our culture right now is just having conversations and having the tough conversations. You know, like Lincoln said, right? It's about having those hard conversations. And, you know, I'm concerned about canceling each other, you know, cancel culture is big right now where folks are shutting each other out. We're not talking to each other. And I've always subscribed to the marketplace of ideas, right? Making sure we're all talking to one another, having disagreements but still talking to one another to really move forward. And and that's something I I always believe in. And some folks say, well, Sean, you're still too optimistic. People won't change. And I still, I still, I still keep going. Because if we don't have that, then we don't have anything. And we're not gonna succeed.
Let me take a second question, and then I would, and and then I wanna come back to a point that Sean just made. Ernesto, we're ready for another question.
Tanya Caldwell, a student at the CUNY School of Urban Studies, asks, and is a student, and she is a CUNY Women's Public Service Intern at the Office of New York State Senator Toby Ann Stavisky. She asked, how will the council continue to work with CUNY and encourage and support new enrollment in a post-pandemic economy?
Excellent question. I don't know who wants to grab that. People have been talking about CUNY, CUNY, CUNY funding, CUNY access, you know, access to CUNY. Camilla, have you thought, I mean, you know, you're a college at Staten Island, I'm a Brooklyn College boy. I mean, anybody who wants to jump in on that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, CUNY is a staple of of New York City, you know, and and it is, and to be honest with you, you know, they were in the forefront of a lot of conversations during COVID. I mean, COVID really changed everything, right? And so now we're all running to catch up and figuring out how do we get people off their couches? I mean, it's not just a CUNY issue. It's a work issue. It's it's, you know, it's, you know, how are we going to stay and be positive? So a lot of the things that that we do, because I do run, well, I won't run anymore, but, you know, I started Sett Down's First Youth Bill program. And we partnered with CUNY on the urban tech program. We partnered with CUNY on many issues that are really addressing the inequities and disparities in our in our neighborhoods. And how do we engage them to create that spark again, the whole basis in the in the ideology of what CUNY is, is really digging deep into the community and being part, just like this forum, the bread and budget, the bread and butter issues and the issues that are really plaguing. And I so, you know, making sure that that funding and resources and that we're really paying close attention to what all the amazing things and the anchor that CUNY in every borough brings and providing more funding and resources so they can now branch off and get into some things like, you know, horticulture or get in touch with, you know, how do we build, how are we going into neighborhoods and and doing, you know, tech programs, horticulture programs? One of the things to speak to Sean, allowing dormitory use for folks that are not able to live in, you know, because we're looking at homeless situations. But CUNY has been one of those places that say, listen, you know, if you wanna be in CUNY, then we will provide you with the housing you need so you can get that degree so that mom can do those things. I mean, we have to now think outside of the box and we now have to look at things in a holistic way. And CUNY has always been in the forefront of that. So we're just gonna continue to support CUNY so they can continue to do that.
Anybody, either of you wanna jump in on this?
Yeah, I'll add in to Camilla's point, you know, there, we can bring more childcare centers throughout CUNY to support, to support young parents. There's a lot we can do to bring you free universal broadband for low-income students, using our offices, operating in capital cost towards after-school programming. For instance, City College has a program of that of that kind, which serves a lot of students in our neighborhoods. There's just so much more that we we should be doing, as well as supporting our staff and and supporting the teachers at CUNY, making sure that their pay is equitable and that they're getting, you know, tenure that they need. Because it's 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 a holistic approach that we gotta take to addressing this.
Lincoln, you were gonna say something.
Look, CUNY is economic mobility. And no university in the country does a better job of helping working class, lower-income people join the middle class, upper-middle class than CUNY, period. And I'm very proud that my first job out of college was in Sean's district at City College at the Dominican Studies Institute. My sister's a CUNY graduate. CUNY is is a phenomenal place. And we, as a city, need to do more to support CUNY. I think the CUNY Rising Plan that was developed during COVID is exciting. I'm really looking forward to building with CUNY students and with Professional Staff Congress to ensure that we're getting resources to each and every CUNY college so that we can improve graduation rates, make it easier for for our students to get through to their associate's degrees, to their BAs, to their graduate degrees. And, you know, I think Camilla and Sean suggested some great ideas for how we can provide some additional supports. And, you know, we've, we've seen it work with the CUNY ASAP program, especially Bronx Community College. I wanna see it expanded system-wide so that we're really helping our, especially young people, get through and graduate. Because the the rates of of young people, young New Yorkers who start at CUNY but don't make it through are far too low.
Sean, you were talking about essentially cancel culture, that we, that that debate has been stifled as the, as kind of the middle has been centered, has been hollowed out and people have been retreating. You know, I mean, as a person who grew up in a city which had seven daily papers at the time, you know, we can't even agree on the facts. We've, you know, you know, it's it's hard to debate when you don't have a common set of facts that you even agree on. And, you know, because people have retreated to ideological silos. To me, one of the factors leading to the election of Eric Adams, especially in a Democratic primary where you had some significant what, you know, to fall into the general lane of extremely progressive, in some cases, DSA-type of candidate who talked about poor communities of color, working communities of color. And Eric Adams talked to them. He didn't talk about them. He talked to them. And he was, you know, he kind of broke through, you know, he, you know, and I think he's talked about, you know, health issues in a way that's very holistic to do, you know, and even in this discussion about policing issues. How do you, I mean, what are you expecting from Eric Adams? We have about ten minutes left. I know we could talk about this for months. But what are you, what are you hoping for and what are you expecting for him from and from an Adams administration? Are you, are you optimistic?
I'm optimistic. I, you wanna go, go first, Camilla?
No, it's okay, Sean.
Okay, I'm optimistic. I I think that, you know, the mayor ran on a campaign that that he led with his story, right? He spoke about, you know, the the way he had to change his diet because he was on the verge of.
It is, you know, you know, you know, there's a lot of issues connected. I think it's one of the most exciting things, personally. One of the most exciting aspects of of what he ran on.
Yeah, plant, a plant-based diet, right? And food security is gonna be a big, big part of his agenda. I am hopeful that David Banks would be very, you know, the next school's chancellor, assuming that's the case. He would be very big on, he's a District Seven resident, by the way. But he would be very big on after-school program for our kids. And and Eric has supported universal after-school, particularly in in neighborhoods that are under-resourced. And so I'm really excited to see his work on education, particularly after-school, which is also a facet of childcare, but also how serious he's taking food security, which is is really a big issue for our district.
Lincoln, jump in. I mean, what's your anticipation?
I I have the the privilege of working with the Borough President, the Mayor-elect, for many years. And Eric is a smart and serious and thoughtful guy, and I think he's gonna bring tremendous energy to City Hall. When it comes to issues, I'm really excited to work with him on. I totally agree with Sean. I think food is health. And he's gonna be a champion for bringing high-quality, fresh, affordable produce and quality food into low-income communities. And that is a game changer. And I think he's gonna be a real champion around transportation issues, making sure that we can safely get around on bicycle, investing in our mass transit, investing in more pedestrian spaces and thinking creatively about our streetscape. And, you know, I think that he doesn't, Eric Adams, in my opinion, doesn't get enough credit for the leadership he demonstrated over many decades in taking on the Police Department. You know, in founding a Hundred Blacks in Law Enforcement Who Care, he was somebody who tried to reform the Police Department from the inside. And I am hopeful that we'll be able to find some common ground around areas for greater police accountability and for investings in alternatives to policing to advance safety in our communities. He's been a big champion of cure violence, the crisis management system where we support nonprofit organizations to engage with young people in our community who are involved in in gangs and at risk of getting on the wrong track. And I think that these are the kinds of things where where we could find some real strong common ground with with the Mayor-elect.
Camilla, same, same question.
I agree with both my colleagues. Um, I was an early supporter of, um, the Mayor-elect Eric Adams. Um, I started Staten Island's First Minority Women in Business Association. And being the pragmatic leader, um, he said something to me that stuck with me. It was a quote from Bishop Desmond Tutu, and it was, you know, we have to stop trying to pull people out of the river. We need to walk upstream and prevent them from falling in. Now, you have to kind of meditate on that because it doesn't matter whether you're preventing, um, eating poorly or you're, um, looking at what the issues are in law enforcement. It's all about looking at what the issue is and addressing that issue and making, and doing it holistically. Um, and so I am like really excited, uh, there, I've, I've followed his career. I'm also someone who's, you know, been looking at challenges in our communities and finding, as, you know, leading a not-for-profit, not coming from a city agency, but leading a not-for-profit, it's like writing grants, it's like, you know, looking at legislation. We're looking at challenges, we're trying to put the pieces together, putting the outputs together to make sure. And I think that, um, the, the Mayor-elect is, is looking at that in a very, uh, dare I say pragmatic way and in a way that people can understand what he's saying.
I think what, you know, the upstream aspect, I actually think is essential. When you, you know, that you have a diabetes, incredible increase in diabetes and especially in poor communities, communities of color, essential worker communities, it was exacerbated during the pandemic. And that problem, you have to tackle that problem, but you also have to tackle upstream. And you have to, and, and that's where you get into the availability of, of-
Well, this is about, you know, community gardens in NYCHA. This is about growing your own food, this is about farm to table, this is about the education. This is about activating communities to take responsibility of their own, the parks that are, that surround them. And then they start, when you know better, you do better. And that is the upstream, it's, it's really looking at, you know, you're not just, just be, you know, it is the dicks connection we have with people of different economic, you know, backgrounds. Like, you know, you can go to a bodega and, and eat poorly. But how are we investing in our, in our brethren, how are we invested in our, in our, in the people that are, you know, our neighbors? That, you know, how are they activating the local parks? How are they cleaning up their own neighborhoods? How are they, how are we looking at NYCHA? So it has to be holistic. It is the upstream, preventing them from falling in is really laser-focused on what the actual issue is and addressing that. Because they're human beings and everyone is a human being, everybody has a right to proper food source, you know, food sources, proper housing, you know, all of that.
The same upstream argument applying is how he approached the issues of, the issues of policing. Uh, Sean, let me, actually, let me go to both you and, and Lincoln. I mean, he talks about how it's, you know, don't talk about defunding the police. You have a, a significant gang problem, you know, fueling a lot of violent crime. You have to tackle that, you have to tackle that gang violence. But that gang violence is also a reflection of upstream issues of housing and schooling. And, you know, I guess you could connect the food issue in there and jobs. I mean, you know, that, that, that you can tackle both ends of that continuum at the same time. I mean, go ahead, Lincoln.
Sure, I mean, look, you know, when, when I walk around my district and I go to my NYCHA developments, I've, I've got the privilege of representing seven NYCHA developments in the 33rd Council District. You know, Gowanus and Wykoff are two larger developments in kind of the Boreham Hill Gowanus area, um, where we've seen a meaningful uptick in gun violence during COVID. And there are real safety concerns that I hear about from residents almost every day. But these are the same developments where the Gowanus Community Center has been closed for 20 years. Uh, where the Wykoff Gardens Community Center has been promised a major renovation and new expansion because it's so severely dilapidated and has no space for any physical activity whatsoever. When we are failing to provide opportunity to our young people, then it can't be a surprise that people end up, uh, on the wrong track. Uh, and so the onus is on us to actually invest in our communities, to actually provide opportunity to our communities. I am deeply frustrated that we've experienced such intense gentrification in the greater downtown Brooklyn area. But we haven't provided jobs to longtime low-income residents. When you look at the median income in Gowanus houses or in Wykoff Gardens, it hasn't changed in 20 or 30 years, despite the blocks around those developments becoming exceptionally wealthy. So we need to do a better job of actually incorporating longtime low-income residents into the growth and development and opportunity that's happening in our neighborhoods.
Go ahead, Sean, I want to, I'm only about 45 seconds left, but I, but I do want to hear from you on this.
Um, we have to focus on the, the root causes, right? And that's what my colleagues here are talking about. The lack of housing, the lack of education and job opportunities is, is, is the largest contributor to why folks behave the way that they do. And it, it's a reflection of our failure, um, i- in government and the failure of others to addressing these root causes. And I think, I do think that if we address these root causes, that we would see crime plummet. Um, at the same time, you know, I think that society has failed people so much that, you know, it's, it's really hard to unturn that. And so we need, we need to make sure that we do everything we can to help them. Um, a- and, and so that's, um, that's my take on it.
You're off there because as a former newspaper reporter, I always make deadlines and we're, we're at, we're, we're out of time. I want to thank you all, this is really, this was really spirited. I want to wish you all luck and I want to wish us luck as we enter into this, you know, always the strange new world of New York City. Thank you very much, we'll see you next time on the CUNY Forum.